Alright, I am going to start the Mount Scotty School District meeting for Monday, March 11th. At 6:31 PM and we are going to start with our student presentation of learning. So if Mr. Champ wants to say anymore, do when they start, we do. I'm so excited that we have three fabulous middle school students here who are willing to share some of their work. Their teachers recommended them because of their science projects or their poetry that they've done in the LA class. And I did have quite a few male students on the basketball team. We're having a banquet tonight, so some of their projects are here for you to look at. Berus tonight and I can talk a little bit more about that from their Spanish class. But we're going to start, we have one poem, two poems, and then a science project to share. So Natalie, do you mind?
I always turn it down first.
Where would you like the students to read from? This microphone or can they give this one?
Yeah, they can come up.
You can come right up here, Natalie. You can tell us a little bit about your poem and your expectation. Mr. Lord asking you guys?
Yes, of course you can.
We have, so my poem, so we had a project on poems and I did this poem for extra credit. So my name is Natalie Rennie, Hudson Rennie's younger sister. We all know my business. And this is my poem, the poem title is "I Feel Free." The smell of rubber tar fills up my nose, smelling your brand new shoes. The sweet smell of victory passing by each opponent. The smell of hard work runs off by other athletes. The shot of the gun releases the pressure. Clicking off the spikes coming off of the track. The heavy breathing behind me is suffering. Crowd roaring through the children's way. I taste the salty sweat dripping in my mouth. Chasing the orange gator while it wants to come back up. The blood fills up my mouth as I fight my dry crusty lips. I see the open space ahead with no runner. Seeing the final stretch away with the last bit of energy. The victory waits for me. I feel the hot blazing sun on my skin. Sweat dripping off my face, landing on my blue spikes. The cold cups of water pouring on my head after my race, I feel free.
We have another good job, another poem from Abby Chatlos.
Thank you. My name is Abby Chatlos and I write a lot of poems, like all the time. I write poetry because I feel like it helps me express my emotions and I feel like it helps me become a better version of myself. And I think that it's a way that, like for journaling, most people, that helps them. But for me, poetry is my journey, so that's what I do. I wrote this poem and when the sign with came up for Lord and I was able to put a poem about myself in for extra credit as a second poem to the love poem I did. I did this one. It's called "Growing Up Isn't So Easy." Yesterday I was a kid putting on my jelly sandals and wearing a secret dress, falling asleep on the couch just so that mom would carry me to bed. In school, nobody was different, everyone was the same. We all just played together and eventually boys got cooties and girls just wanted to be with the girls. Later I was in school and a girl called me weird because my hair wasn't just right or maybe my shoes were a little too tight. Yesterday I found out some girls were mean. Then I was officially a teenager, that's when boys got me. I was a good enough or pretty enough, and when I finally was pretty enough, they weren't really looking for a relationship. Lighting a candle, it fills up the room with vanilla and sugar cookies. That's when I find out I don't like that scent anymore. Lying in bed, feeling soaked below, waking up like to have a glass on the beach. I never quite knew why boys were so mean. Red, green, yellow, blue slippers, bad bone. Suddenly I didn't know where I was anymore, lost in the darkness. Boys don't control me, I say, and go back to school. I want to be like the other girls and I want to be cool. That's when I learned that other girls at school were way crazy too. The next day I was mature and I didn't need a boyfriend or disinterposed to be me. I was just me, a girl singing in the shower and running to dance in the rain fully clothed. Why? Because I wanted to and no one's going to stop me. Putting on makeup in the mornings, not for anyone else but for me. I was friendly me. That's when I look back and slip through the pages, reading my life. That's when I realized, growing up isn't so easy.
Thank you, Abby. Next, you have Clinton Fox asked Abby and Natalie and one of their partners who are going to be here tonight to share one of their timelines. Can I help you guys hold it while you play games? There we go.
Okay, so our project was about different eras of like fossils and things that happened around the Earth formation. Okay, the first one is the Hayden era, which happened when was the Earth formation most? And here's a picture of the state again. We'll leave this down for when. This is the Archean era. The oxygen was pouring out of the atmosphere right now. This is the pre-Cabaret era, so Supreme. And this is the picture. Oh, I'm having struggles. This era was the Protocetic and was before my cases ago. I mean, this one was the Cambrian period, age of ancient vertebrates. This is the Ordinate period. And the Ice Age begins. So, period, first land plants. And then from here to here, the Paleolithic era. The next one is the Slavian period, age of fish. This one is the Pacific epic, which is the first reptiles. And the Pennsylvania epic, which both of those are in the Carbon period, period. The Cretaceous period, which is the first sea plants. The Jurassic period, first dinosaurs. The Jurassic period, dinosaurs are plentiful. And from here to here is the Mesozoic era. This is the Creaceous period, first flowering plants. The Floric epic, which is many different planets with a diversity of mammals and plants. The Eocene epic, which has been found and building in Europe and Asia. Those are in the Glacial period. The next one is the Olivopaleidocene epic, which is the volcano and early humans. And this one is in the Eocene period. And then back here is the Old Iron epic again. And the Whistian and Blue Sea epic, which are in the Quaternary period, which are the end of the Paleolithic period.
Some serious, okay, wow. Just one of the things I noticed when I was in the classroom while you were looking at fossils and looking at rock formation. You guys did a hands-on project with this box that included your different materials and your popsicle stick. Can you explain to the audience a little bit what that was like?
So we had to be here and then the first material we put in was sugar. And then we put fish stone on top of that and then we put steam on top of that. And we use a popsicle stick and we push that down the middle and that represents like the layers that the fossil were in and how like an earthquake can cause this intrusion that like splurts right down.
Thank you, ladies. One of the things that Senora wanted people to know with the projects that are here, students are working and finishing these up at this time. Abby, are you in Spanish?
Yes.
Abby's one of our Spanish students in Cuba and yours is on Colombia. We have España, Cuba, and Peru here tonight and I could bring more next time. But Senora wanted you to know that this eighth grade class are all students who in our Spanish program are going to be able to test out at the end of the year to determine if they can move right into Spanish II next year. And as Spanish II students, they are all preparing these to understand cultures of different areas and how to talk about the weather because they are planning a trip to Costa Rica for next year with the Spanish flag. So that's something she wanted you to know. And I think the rest I could say for our portion of the admin report there. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, ladies and dads, parents, so much.
For bringing them.
You're welcome. Stay, or you're welcome to step out.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, that was awesome. Very well spoken. Thank you. Okay, so first I just want to welcome to board, Lord Miller. We've been returning the members. We have Megan. Welcome back to the board. We're very happy to have you here and really are grateful that you're willing to serve on the school board. And on that note, I am going to, we have to do a reorganization tonight, so I'm gonna I'm gonna take nominations for the election of a chairperson.
Did you call the meeting already?
I thought I did. Yes. Thank you. So I will take nominations for the election of a chairperson for the Mount Scotty School District. I nominate, what do you want to nominate? Davis Adra. Are there any other nominations? Okay, Elizabeth is online if she wants to participate, she certainly can as well. So hearing no other nominations, Davis, do you accept this nomination?
I do.
And I will take a vote. All those in favor of electing Davis to continue on as board chair for Mount Scotty School District. To do a roll call for this? With somebody online? It's not really a motion.
I think Elizabeth is online, so.
Does that mean we don't? Nancy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And Elizabeth?
Hi, I'm so sorry, I can't be there in person, I'm sorry.
Thank you for being here online. Okay, so that nomination is unanimous and Davis is the chair and I'm going to turn the meeting over to him.
Thank you Christine and thanks for the nomination and support. I started being a chair at a pretty interesting time. Yeah, hit the ground running and I'm feeling a lot more confident than I was two months ago. So next, I will take nominations for the vice chairperson of the Mount Scotty School Board.
Don't all speak at once. I'll nominate Elizabeth.
Do I hear any other nominations?
I'll second that.
And Elizabeth, do you accept the nomination?
I accept. Thank you, thank you for the nomination.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote starting this end this time. Starting with Megan.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so Elizabeth is our vice chair. Next, I will take a nomination or nominations for the clerk of the board.
We have a reminder what the clerk does as well as the rest of the list.
Sure, so the clerk is in order appropriately. The chair and the vice chair, I learned this when I was the clerk, the clerk runs the meeting, it's like the third line there.
But something else as well.
If needed.
If needed, yeah, we do have, we do have a designated minute taker on the board, but taker verify minutes, I did that once or twice, I think, when I was clerk. That is clerk. And that's the board clerk, not to be confused with the district clerk.
Thank you.
Who is the clerk?
I was the most recent clerk.
I nominate Nancy.
Any other nominations? Hey Nancy, do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
So I will take a roll call vote, starting with Elizabeth this time.
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So Nancy is our clerk. Next, we are on to the signer of the manifest. And Nancy, I believe that was you in the past, did you even sign her the manifest?
I think so, I have done that, but I think it's Bill now.
It is Bill. And Bill, do you want to explain to us about the site? It's a casual kind of thing, right?
Yeah, I get an email every two weeks. Someone saying, get going, I have to go and I have the site stuff. I do it for the dashboard stuff.
All right, I will take nomination then for the signer of the manifest.
I nominate Bill.
Okay.
Do I hear any other nominations for the signer of the manifest? And Bill, do you accept?
I do with honor.
All right. All right, I will take a roll call vote, starting with Megan.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Congratulations, Billy, you're the signer of the manifest.
So excited.
Now we are on to the backup signer of the manifest.
Are we going to volunteer?
Okay.
Yes, that's when Bill is on vacation, which he doesn't do.
Excellent, right, so Amy has nominated herself to be signer of the manifest?
Yes.
Do we hear any other nominations or self-nominations? Okay, hearing none, I will take a roll call vote, so Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Nancy? Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, congratulations, you are the backup signer of the manifest. And on to the nomination of the representative to the SU Marketing Council.
Marketing?
Marketing, sorry.
So in the past, Bill, and Bill, at least in the past, has done a very incredible job.
Oh, thank you.
A nine outstanding job.
Thank you. It's a lot of work, if anyone else wants to.
Megan, would you be interested in being lead?
I would, I don't know necessarily a lot about it, but I'm.
And I don't, I don't mind continuing, I spend a lot of time researching and I lead the negotiating team, so.
Don't we have two people on the negotiating team?
We could. No, we need one. And then, you know, the question is, does someone else in this group want to be the representative from the issue? I will represent the issue.
So are you on the board as a Mount Scotty rep?
Yes, and on the board as the issue.
So the SU meeting, can you bring that up? You want to be the SU rep or you'd be the same? That's part of the SU reorganization.
All right, so I will nominate Bill to be the representative to the SU Marketing Council.
I accept.
Excellent. Do you have nominations? No? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote, Elizabeth?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, Bill, you are the rep for the SU Bargaining Council.
Yep, and sort of a side note, really interesting, the other school districts have someone who is not on the issue. So.
It's true.
I agree, has it? It doesn't add up if needed.
Right.
All right, so next we are on to the designation of our truant officer. It looks like we have Paul Favreau. I assume he's going to continue. All right, so. Guess we do.
Disappoint him.
Disappoint him, all right, I will take a motion to appoint Paul Favreau as our truant officer for Mount Scotty School District.
Amy, so.
Aye.
All right. Any discussion? All right. I'll do a roll call vote, oh, Elizabeth, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Oh, I've got a question for Christine and or whatever Windsor principals are in the room. How exactly does Paul Favreau work with Karen Zito?
Forgot, are you talking about in terms of truancy, Alyssa?
Yeah, specifically regarding truancy.
So here is kind of the lead on truancy when it gets, you know, when a student becomes quite truant. And sometimes there are meetings with administration and Mr. Zito and families and sometimes the, I mean, sometimes it's out of family request that we send our school resource officer to particular house if a student is not getting ready for school. That's happened in my experience. Sometimes we have to do an affidavit and Paul might be involved in helping us or the process of the affidavit. Can't think of another, can you?
I can, he sometimes will hand deliver a letter if we can't get it there any other way.
Yeah, thanks, Kate.
Side note, Elizabeth, the, around truancy, the regional county really needs some guidance from the state legislature on what to do with truancy. It's, it's, it's really uncertain because of the truancy guidelines locally don't match the the way that the federal government and the state now measures absences in truancy, so.
And we've been following the Windsor County truancy protocol.
Right.
So, yeah, it's a good ask.
Really, really needs the guidance.
If you can send me, I have a week to get that into, in time for crossover. If you could send me an email about it, I'll see if I can get it into the miscellaneous education bill.
Okay.
And Paulie's going to send you the protocol right now, Elizabeth as well, so you have it.
Okay, if you can do it, do it as detailed as possible so that I can just forward it on to the right hands, if you wouldn't mind. Yeah, I can do that. Or at least try.
All right, any more discussion? All right, so I will take a vote to designate Paul Favreau as our truant officer, starting with Megan.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Wait, next up, designation of official newspapers. So I will take a motion to designate the Valley News, the Eagle Times, the Vermont Standard, and VT Digger as our official newspapers for the Mount Scotty School District.
Do you need a so moved or a second? Or just a?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, can you repeat those, please?
Sure, we, so we just had a motion moved and seconded to designate the Valley News, Eagle Times, the Vermont Standard, and VT Digger as the official newspapers of the Mount Scotty School District. Elizabeth?
I would like to remove the Vermont Standard as one of our official designated newspapers.
Is that because you don't like the?
Any further discussion?
I have no problem removing that, they don't particularly cover our area.
They have not covered our district accurately in over four years.
And the argument in the past was that if we send the money, they might actually cover us and that has not been a success.
Yeah, they did. I will say, they did do some coverage of the budget issues that was fairly on point lately, but you know, I do, you know, hear what you're saying.
I appreciate that, I think that was not specifically about our, our district, the way that other coverage has been. And when they cover our district specifically, they're not accurate. And when I tried as chair, it's, you know, it's hard to get them to print accurate things, even if you, even if you present them with corrections and so on and so on. And that, and that's our paper of record.
I support recommendations.
Okay. So Nancy, will?
That was actually your motion for second, so would you like?
Whatever, oh yes, I would, I will rescind my motion, is that what it is? Or amend my motion to remove the Vermont Standard from our designation of official newspapers.
A second?
So nice having a very young memory running through these things.
Any further discussion?
What does that mean by removing them, we are not giving them money, like you said, for ads, like, I'm just curious what that means, what is that?
We're no longer paying them to
Paying for this.
Paying for them to pose our analysis of the.
That one.
Yeah, so it's papers of record, right? So the Valley News and then it is arguably too a little bit out of our coverage area, I mean, that's more Woodstock and sort of west of us. So Valley News and Eagle Times, I think, solidly cover us and then VT So Valley News and Eagle Times, I think, solidly cover us. And then VT Digger is really a statewide resource, but they will, they do cover Windsor as well.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I, I would, you know, for my purposes, I think Valley News and Eagle Times do a fine job covering our, uh, our district and our communities. So I'm totally okay with that, although we already did it. Alright, any further discussion? Alright, I will take a roll call vote, starting with Elizabeth.
Aye.
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So that designates, uh, Valley News, Eagle Times, and VT Digger as our official newspapers.
Windsor Chronicle, we used to have here.
Yeah.
While.
Yes.
The whole arm is a library. Alright, we're arms. So designation of representative to the Hartford Area Career and Technology Center. Uh, and Bill, I think you can speak to that a little bit. Have you done that with us?
Uh, for a little bit. It's not something that I would ever do again, being an employee of Hartford School District.
It's a bit of a time commitment too, right?
Yes. It puts me in an odd place, seeing I have to deal with these people on a whole different other level and try to get them to do the job, so.
Is, is it still? Used to be?
It's probably every other month.
Yeah.
There, there it goes. For us. Or quarterly, yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah, quarterly.
Yeah.
And it's in person, correct?
Yes.
And what is it? Like what?
It's fascinating to, to go, because it's, it's a discussion of, um, well, it's sort of a presentation of what they're doing. You can be able to get an idea of, uh, what sort of, what HACCTC does, and then talks about goals, and then you present what sort of things that your district wants. Rebecca has done it for a little while.
I did it for.
You did it for a while.
Three years, I think.
Do you like it or are you? I would, I would do it if no one else wants to, like, yes, I would do it.
Yeah, you learn a lot about how the, our, the, the different schools interact and how, yeah, how they interact and how they serve our students and what it means for our school district to be sending students. I nominate Megan.
I second that. I second.
Yeah, oh, this is a designation technically.
Yeah. I designate.
So you, I, I will, I will take a motion to designate Megan as our representative to the Hartford Area Career and Technology Center.
So.
Thank you.
Alright. So, or, okay, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. Elizabeth?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
I have an aye. So you are now our representative to HACCTC.
Often have really good food too. Sort of.
And towards the, the end of the year, you get to be part of the, um, senior, their, um, capstone, capstone presentation, their portfolios. And wow, these kids really do some good work.
They do amazing stuff, and it's as a resource for, for students who, who excel sometimes outside of the classroom. I know that that's, I, there are peers of mine who I know that was a real lifesaver for them. Um, so, um, yeah, slightly jealous that you guys spent some time around, they're kind of wanting to for years, like, they're trying to drop in this year. Um, alright, so we are on to establishment of regular time, place, and date of monthly meeting. So I think the second Tuesday, we've been doing second Tuesdays at 6:00 PM.
Six.
Six thirty, thank you. Uh, and we have been alternating between here in room 210 at the Windsor School and the library at Albert Bridge School.
You said Tuesday?
It's been Monday.
Monday, sorry, yeah.
But it was going to be a Tuesday instead of a Monday. Something other than a Monday.
I didn't hear the beginning.
Or a first Monday.
We can change it.
What was the, I didn't hear your question, Amy, so.
Well, when he said Tuesday, I was like, wow, cool.
Because that was a better day for you.
I think we discovered we ran into somebody else's.
Yeah.
Meeting. There, there's, uh, Hartling is on a Tuesday, on the first Tuesday, and Weddith Field is on the second Tuesday. So if you wanted a Tuesday.
Yeah, stick to Monday.
Then.
Third, we run into SU or we're right up.
And then you run into, oh, we got SU, yeah.
Could we switch to the first? Sunday?
Pardon me, I have the first Monday or.
We were trying to go through Mondays in a row, so the second Tuesday and then the fourth Tuesday was the SU, so we're trying to give some time in between.
SU's, what has been Mondays.
ASU is Monday, and it is like the fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday, yeah.
Mount Scotty's the second, and ASU's the fourth. But it, it could be the first and third, I don't think. That would not interfere with the other districts.
Uh, that's what Nancy wore shoes, but I, I, I don't have any. Well, let's take, listen, Elizabeth?
Um, are we discussing whether we move to Tuesday?
Not really.
Okay, because I, I'll, I'll never be able to attend.
Yeah.
So we're on the second Tuesday now, aren't we?
No, we are.
You're all scheduled for the second and fourth Monday, correct?
Yes. Um, I will take a motion to have, to hold to establish the regular time, place, and date of our monthly Mount Scotty School District meetings as being on the first Monday of each month at 6:30 PM, alternating locations between rooms 210 in the Windsor School and the library at Albert Bridge School.
So the.
So just the first?
The first Monday or second Thursday?
First.
The first Monday, and then we'll have to do the.
Yeah.
SU.
We don't decide the SU board.
Designation.
First Monday. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Okay. Okay.
You used to do the first.
Again. Oh, second.
So we're changing it. First and third, well, first.
Maybe the third.
I hope it's the third.
So it could be two weeks and a round of things. I mean, you all get to decide that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really a conversation for another meeting. Um, but we're just deciding. Yeah, we, I think a couple of years ago, we were doing the first Mondays. Yeah. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I have no problem doing the first Mondays.
I still expect it the first Monday, and I'm relieved when I look at the calendar on five o'clock on the first Monday, I'm like, ah.
Yeah, that happened to me a couple of times as well.
You're, you're sucking a lot of joy out of my life.
So first Monday.
First Monday, 6:30 PM, either here or library at Albert Bridge.
So if the SU wants to rename the fourth, we, could we switch back to the second so we don't have two meetings in a row, two Mondays in a row?
If we really wanted to.
I don't understand why we changed it.
Um. For people's schedules. Second Monday's hard.
And, okay. And if. Because I, it, it doesn't matter to me.
I mean.
It can be the second Monday.
I don't want it to be the first. I mean, that's fine.
I don't, I, oh, sorry.
I'm just so concerned that we might have, we're asking the whole SU to change their meeting.
We're not necessarily, no. We're just, because we're not, we're not holding, we're not scheduling the same time.
No, but do we want two meetings in a row? Two Mondays in a row for meetings?
We can always change it.
Okay.
If the SU doesn't change, yeah, the third.
Yep. We also have to vote to accept this, so if that's something that doesn't appeal to you, or not allowed to vote for. Elizabeth?
Thanks, Davis. The original, I think we changed it a couple of years ago from the first Monday to the second Monday because it, uh, we were never able to, we were never able to attend, uh, select board meetings in both Windsor and West Windsor. And then they both changed their times to, to coordinate with ours so that we still could never attend any of their meetings. So, uh, changing back to the first Monday of the month is, uh, is my preference, if, if it doesn't, uh, coincide with the other select board meetings, and I don't think it does.
I'll note that Windsor just changed their select board meetings, I believe, to Wednesdays now.
Yep.
At 8:00 PM, and that's, they do it twice, so it's, I think, the first and third or second and fourth, one of, one of those two. But yeah, at any rate, we wouldn't have a conflict with them. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. Elizabeth?
Aye.
Nancy?
No.
Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And I am an aye. So we will, we will do the first Mondays, and, you know, just reminder, for some reason that doesn't work out, we can always reconsider. 7:13, okay, so we've set our time, place, and date. Um, we are now nominating a district treasurer, and, um, can you remind me who that is?
I am the district treasurer.
Nancy?
And, uh, what I do is mainly go to both banks in Windsor, the one opposite, Cumberland Farms, and the one in writing, and get them to please write a check to, um, Terry Hanes', um, athletic scholarship fund, because she's already given the check to the recipients. And it's always a struggle, but, um, we work at it.
You also have to allow them to, you, you, you sign up for an electronic.
Yes, uh, it's best to not change the treasurer too often, because, yeah, you have to sign, be official in both places.
Yeah. I nominate Nancy.
I second that.
Right.
It's not very hard, but it's just time consuming to try to get those checks.
Yeah, you do a great job.
We haven't failed yet.
We're in the process right now. I just visited the banks last Thursday.
And that, well, Nancy's got this locked down. Uh, any other nominations? Any further discussion? Alright, I will take a vote, starting with Megan.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so Nancy, you are, will continue on as our district treasurer. And now this last one is the nomination of a district clerk. Um, I think we may want to table this one. I know that this past year Larry generously offered to serve as a district clerk, um, which was very helpful. I know that it is the state's advisory that they typically want the district clerk to also be the town clerk. Um, so I think that, I know we have a brand new town clerk, so I think that we should wait until we can touch base with, with her. Um, do you know who the town clerk is? I, I caught Dave.
I heard it, but I don't know.
At any rate, we're not doing it tonight.
There's also West Windsor.
Yes, so, yeah, so it could be Windsor, West Windsor, but I think that we should, um, between this meeting and next, um, one of us, we can.
Contact.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do some outreach and, and see if either, either of them is interested in doing it. Um, I will, uh, Elizabeth?
Oh, no, sorry, not, nothing.
Alright. Alright. Oh, these little guys are thinking here. Elizabeth?
Yeah, it turns out I do have a question. Okay, so here's the problem. The problem is, we are in a new year. We do have a new board, and we still have one more, uh, we have to do the election for the, um, or the vote on our budget, so. So do we, are we allowed to, uh, have Larry stay for now and then just put a, put a pin in it to, to, uh, revisit after the, the vote?
He has offered to continue through this election.
Thank you for bringing that up, Elizabeth. Yeah, it would be a little bit silly to swap Larry out in the, uh, the home stretch.
He's done a great job.
And you, yeah, I mean, Larry's doing an amazing job, so, uh, very good point. Uh.
So we'll put that on our votes, I don't know, maybe. Uh, when are we meeting?
We're going to watch, nominate Larry now.
Yeah, I think we should vote on Larry now.
Yes.
I love Larry.
Yeah, I may not.
I nominate Larry Dower.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, hearing none, I will take a vote. Elizabeth?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so Larry is, for the time being, going to continue on as our district clerk. And, uh, you know, knowing that we will, I'll revisit that in the near future. Yeah, thank you for bringing up those with that. That makes a lot of sense. And unless there is anything else on this list, we don't need to redesignate WIC or any of that stuff at organizational level, right? Okay, I think the, alright, yeah, I know there's the state, like the, this state level boards up, the VSPA.
They have to do that themselves.
Yeah, okay.
That's out of the LPA. So who is the WIC person right now? You, what? You good with that?
I'm, I'm cool with that, yeah. Um, yeah, then VSPA will come up with themself. Cool, yeah, those were my only two for questions, so I think we're, we're all good on that. Alright, thank you for, uh, bearing with me as we get through our, our reorganization, but we are, uh, that ends our reorganization. We are now reorganized for the 24, 25 school year. Uh, any changes or additions to the rest of the agenda? Um, I know we preemptively moved the student presentation of learning up to the front, so I will, I will just say that we're starting that as five. Uh, Christine?
Yes, we have under the administrative report, uh, retirements. And I don't, I, I think that that was announced at our last meeting, the retirement.
Yes.
So.
Oh, it was that one, yeah.
Yeah, but there are no others, but I do need to add resignations under the items for discussion.
Okay.
Or motions due, we do have one resignation.
Okay. Any other, any other changes? Alright. No more changes then, so we are now on to approval of minutes from our last, excuse me, several minutes and, uh, meetings, and we've had a few. So, let's just see, I think we might want to do this individually, because I believe we had slightly different crowd for these last three, um. Um, I'll actually do the first two as a group, because we have the same people at those, then I'll do the other one separately, just in the interest of efficiency. So do I hear a, I will take a motion to accept the minutes from February 12, 2024, and February 27, 2024. So do I hear a, I will take a motion to accept the minutes from February 12, 2024, and February 27, 2024. So move it.
Start.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none. I will take a roll call vote on that, so Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Abstain.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so accepted our February 12 and 27 minutes. Then I will take a motion to accept our minutes from March 1, 2024. So move it.
Come on, Nancy, jump in.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will take a vote. Elizabeth?
Aye.
Nancy?
Abstain.
All right, Amy?
Abstain.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Abstain.
And I am an aye as well, so. Okay. All right. So those are accepted, we can vote in those three objections, I think that that still works. All right, so close these up, so we've accepted our minutes, all of our many minutes from the last month or so. Next up, we have our board involvement report. So anybody who has time to go to any sports games, spending time in the school, seeing the other student or school community events going on, wants to speak out, now is that done?
I don't know if this counts as board, but we had another negotiation meeting, which was I think they're going well, slowly, slowly building a bridge of trust back to, with the staff, and it really takes a lot of work and a lot of listening to what they need. But it's still like we should have started earlier.
I wish I did.
Yeah. I don't know if we want to start thinking about the sports staff
Yeah.
in the spring.
Well, I, for my part, I was able to drop in, I had to miss one or two, I dropped in the last month due to some illness and scheduling conflicts, but I was able to drop in last week, I have to do a couple laps around our schools. I wasn't able, and unfortunately, I'm never really able to science her because it tends to fall exactly when I have a yearly conference that takes me far away from Vermont each year, but I was able to go in and take a look at the posters. And I have to commend our high school students, I mean, I was incredibly impressed with the quality of them. I mean, it really looks like what I see at my conferences, I mean, they are professional, the data is presented in a way that is readable and clear. The research questions are really interesting and all over the map in the best kind of way, very, very creative and well thought out. I was pretty blown away by them, I spent, I tried to go and spend some time at each of them, and it's just, it's incredibly impressive what our students are doing and how our staff is guiding them through that process, because I know that takes a lot of work. And I also was able to, speaking of retirements earlier, I was able to run into Mr. Tufts, who, as it would happen, was in the middle, in his civics class, was talking about local governance. So I got to go and say hi to the students, and I didn't have time to listen too much to him speaking on it, but I got a little bit of an overview of what they were talking about and really drilling down to that local level, and what, I think their question of the day is, what is the common good and how to define that, so. It's great to see our students getting, you know, such amazing instruction and guidance on that. So there's tweets, I know that Andy is retiring this year, and I, you know, I guess congratulate him in person on that. But those are, you know, those are pretty big shoes to fill, you know. He's been here a long time, and I know, I think his predecessor in that curriculum was Beth Dutton, probably, which again, another, unless there was somebody in between, but I think Beth Dutton, she was an institution in her own right, and I think Andy, Andy Tufts also. She made a very big, large positive impact on our students, so we were trying to remember when I had him as a teacher, I think it was almost 20 years ago, or over 20 years ago, I was in eighth grade in American history.
I was just speaking to my niece at dinner Saturday and asking her who her favorite teacher was, and when she said Mr. Tufts, my heart sunk because, of course, I couldn't say anything to her. But also I spoke to her about being a representative on the board, and she said she already has an application, so.
Nice, great, yeah, great.
Yeah, never doubt that, we still have our seat open since our student reference is down in D.C.
It's stolen by the fans.
All right, any other, any other board involvement, or are we good to move on? Okay, so somewhat belatedly this time, we are on to public participation and announcements. Just going to open that up, I don't know. We might align. But this is actually a good opportunity because we are doing reorganization, and I have a couple thoughts on this just as we, as we go into this year. So I'll read, I'll read the long version, even though we don't have folks here, just so we can all kind of hear it again and absorb it. So, public comment is not legally required, but we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns over issues. Through these meetings, our board models for our students how to conduct public discourse, and the board and members of our community can approach controversial issues in a civil and constructive manner, and can demonstrate mutual respect. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed for discussion. Please start by identifying yourself and what town you reside in, and limit your remarks to three minutes. And then there's a few more sections for the extended one, if we have a packed room full of people wanting to speak. We ask that all speakers direct their comments to the board directly and not to the audience. Each speaker will have three minutes, no one speaks until recognized, no shouting or profanity, no questions or comments about specific personnel. On these matters, we ask that you go through appropriate administrative channels. We will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect any divergent views and maintain civility and respect any different views that others possess. Likewise, you may expect that any restrictions will be viewpoint neutral. Please do not expect the board to respond to your questions and comments tonight. We take your concerns seriously, and we want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need requires it. If there seems to be an issue that ought to be followed up on, we may respond to the future meeting or have an appropriate staff member get back to you at an appropriate time. So, and before I completely open the floor, a couple of thoughts on that, one question, is this up in our interim materials folder?
Um, I'll check, I don't know.
If it's not, I think this would be a good thing to put there, because I think it's a good reference for folks to have. I think, and I, you know, I go in the board during a time where there was a lot of public involvement, we had the meetings where there were, well, I mean, weren't in person, but we had a lot of people online, and this was, I think, this was created in response to that, to create some sort of a baseline. I think that we've done a pretty good job working on this, you know. It can be really difficult, and there's a lot of people, I know that we've dealt with, folks kind of speaking on hot moments or need to vote, which is like the issues before as far as recording. And I guess I just wanted to, since we're starting off a new board, just really level set on it. I do want to really reiterate going forward, and, you know, as the chair, I'll try and stick to this, but I really want to make sure that we're we're sticking to that three minute limit as much as possible. All, when we have community, I'll have my timer out, I'll make sure that we're being fair about that, and make sure everybody gets their time. And I know that we have tried a couple of alterations to that in the past, and I think that what I've landed on, having had a couple of those attempts, is that everybody on one topic gets three minutes to comment on it. At my discretion, essentially, if, if time allows, I think people can speak up again, but it's going to be any very ill limited, I would say within about a minute, if there's one more quick comment. And then really just keeping focus on, you know, it can be, I think it can be difficult in a small community to not engage in dialogue, but I really, really want to try to have us not do that. I know it's, it's tough, I mean, it's easy, you know, it's your neighbors, it's people you might have known for a long time, but trying to keep that set on, you know, comments, if, if of course something comes up that needs to be clarified in the moment, that's a little bit different, but I think just trying to avoid having that kind of dialogue in that space. You know, the board is here to engage in discourse about the issues that are before us. And for community members who are, you know, either watching this now or seeing it later, I know that I personally am accessible, you know, if you want to have a one-on-one, I'm always happy to do that, you can email me directly. You know, any members or contact information is out there, but in this space during these meetings, we really need to keep it to public comment and keep the discussions amongst the board. Elizabeth?
Thanks, Davis. I think we ought to oh, I think the next thought that I was thinking was that we should limit comments to one per person until everybody's had a comment. And that made me think that we should, we forgot to address whether we were going to use Robert's rules for big boards or for small boards. And, because we have to, we have to vote on it if we're using Robert's rules for small boards.
One question I have or would like to discuss about the public comment is the beginning public comment, is it just for topics that are not in the agenda? And are we allowing people to then talk about agenda items during the meeting? I would like that to be clear when we.
Thank you for bringing that up, and that's something that I wanted to address and figure out too, yes, very good point. I am going to try to do a good job that if folks start stringing into agenda items during the public comment for items on the agenda, because it is clear that is what that section is for. I will try to redirect folks and remind them that they will have an opportunity to speak up on that, on that item. And to your point, Elizabeth, about the order in which folks speak, I think that I, that is the first I want to take, I would say per item. So if somebody's already spoken on an item and wants to speak again, I would make sure that anybody else who wants to speak on that item get a chance to speak. I'm not going to hold that for the rest of the meetings, I think, you know, that can get a little weird, we try to span that across different agenda items. But I think that's a good, good observation.
Just to be clear, we are going to let the public speak during agenda items?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
Yep, no, I know, and I, we tried a couple of different things the past year, and I think that the approach that I think makes the most sense is people can speak in public comment for items on the agenda, ideally once per agenda item, and then just at my discretion a second time if, if something comes up and it's, you know. But really, that's more of a quick follow-up comment, not another three minutes.
I have a question.
Yep.
When someone offers a lot of questions all at once during the period, then responds with a letter, who talks to them? Who? Who answers those questions for them?
Depending on the board, I, on the board, I would say that that is, unless it specifically pertains to another board member's role, I, that responsibility, in my experience, falls to the chair.
Okay, so it is taken care of, because if I, if I receive a letter, I'm assuming that somebody else is answering it?
Yep, and that's
Yeah, it's a pretty good procedure to allow the board chair to communicate with the public, and then there's not any confusion among the rest of the board. Whenever I respond to a, a community member, as a board chair, I also don't C C the rest of the board, I just C C Christine. And so she is in the loop with my response. It's just a it's a really good hierarchy to follow.
So you do not C C the rest of the board, so we don't know if you.
Yeah, it's not, it's, one of the issue is that open rule laws, it kind of gets sort of fuzzy when you start participating in a dialogue with a community member with the rest of the board.
Okay.
So.
But just to be clear, if there is correspondence in a meeting, is the board's purview to respond to those questions or not, correct? And if there's a correspondence in writing, obviously, we want to acknowledge that each procedure, we put it in the correspondence folder online, but is the chair obligated to respond to the public in that way? Just so it's clear and out there.
Legally, there is no obligation.
Yeah, there's no legal obligation, and I think that that, I mean, this maybe isn't the most satisfying, or you feel that it means discretionary, I think that there are, there are times where we get questions that have, that are answerable and not based upon opinion. Because I think that when we get into, when the chair gets into opining on things in that position, it gets a little bit fuzzy as to whether you're speaking for the board or not, and frankly, unless there has been a vote on something with chair, it doesn't really have the option to speak with the voice of the board, but if it's a question about procedure, policy, that kind of thing, I think you can, you know, in consultation with the superintendent, we can we can respond to those questions, or again, any.
Would you respond as a person's giving, asking it during public?
In the moment, no. No.
Even if it's.
I also don't tend to like to respond to questions emailed. My latest correspondence is the person asked those questions within a board meeting.
Yes, yeah.
And then I stated that I would respond, and Christine and I would respond, but we often get some really odd rants and emails, and it's my opinion, if you're not going to join the meeting in public session, then you're not really going to expect an answer.
Sure. All right. Well, I appreciate you all engaging a little bit in that discussion, I don't believe anything about there, I just.
No, it's not in the interim materials, I just checked, will you send it to me so I can? I just have one announcement, if you're ready, if you're still.
Yeah, no, I'm past the edge beetle, so.
Well, Kate is not here because she's got a medical issue with her daughter, so we're covering for her, but I know that she would announce that the girls' basketball team played in the finals on Saturday in Barry, and they did not win, but they represented Missouri very well, and everybody made it home alive in the treacherous driving.
Yeah, that was my concern after that.
Yeah, it was bad.
I did hear one loud horn going by my house, and I had that moment, I'm like, yeah, they.
But they played well, they had a wonderful season, and that's a big deal.
That is a big deal, yeah.
So.
I'd like to congratulate freshman Haley Tibido, who participated in the North County Community Theater performance outside of Windsor with a lot of Upper Valley high school students, I mean, their performance of Legal Blonde this year. Congratulations to Haley, she did a great job, it was her first year with them. And I also have another one.
All right, so do you see Legal Evil?
Yeah.
I think too.
Yeah.
We all.
I know what the other one was. I wanted to thank Mr. Martez for hosting our middle school S U Y Dance Friday, and it was very well attended. Aldrich and I were chaperones.
It's good.
Yeah, yeah, very well attended.
I was just, it might be part of your, the title one night on Thursday, is that part of? I know, but we should announce that tonight, that is.
Sergio might have some of that.
Okay. Okay, sorry, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
It's, it's in my K5 update.
All right, any other public participation or announcements?
Just to say that that, that dancing, Weatherfield was all student planned and generated, yeah, adults were just, just there. So that was pretty exciting from the Weatherfield student.
Nice, were students DJing it too, and did all the setup?
They, they had a couple adults assisting.
Yeah, so they were running the show.
Yeah.
Nice, love it.
It was great.
Very cool. All right, any other, any other announcements, public, public participation? All right, any other any other announcements, public public participation? Okay, so we are moving on to the administrative report.
Who is starting? So, um, three things we want to share with you. We want to have a little bit of family engagement across the school. We've already had some student presentations, recognition going on, and we'll update on student led conference. I'll take this off. So lots of fun pictures here. Just wanted to celebrate a couple of things. Winter sports, both schools participate in winter sports. Over at Mouse, gotten a huge success on the days that we can go skiing, which is amazing that they do so much. To make it so accessible. I mean, it really is incredible how much work that that community does just to support kids getting skis and gyms up there. So huge thanks to Skimmy Outdoors, an amazing opportunity. Um, we had our lunch with loved ones on February fourteenth, which was well attended. One of the grandparents, friends, community members came to join in. And we have another one coming up pretty soon with our Maple Unit, which is Thursday, March twenty first, the other noon. And you'll get to see a lot of the work that the kids are doing in our schoolwide Maple Unit. If you want to come join us for some pancakes and hopefully some good maple syrup. It's our goal. And then some leader in me stuff going on. We have just had an explosion of students really starting to take leadership roles, which is really exciting. We've always prided ourselves in children, boys and choice, but really putting more responsibility in their hands has. It's just ignited a fire in some of our kids, and we've got, we've had our leadership, lighthouse leadership team going for a while. And then they wanted to add more students, so they said, what if we do a school council too? And I'm like, I'm not sure I know the difference. But they figured it out. They figured out, here's what school council has, and here's what we all do together. And so we had students from different grades, you know, essentially run like a traditional student council. To add to the lighthouse team and then second graders to come every time we meet. We meet every Tuesday and Thursday. And just the excitement of those second graders of coming. At first, they're like, I don't know if I really want to come. But now it's like, if they're not the one chosen to come, they're like. So that's pretty exciting. And we're also working with them to take on more kind of leadership roles in our community. So if you do come to our Maple Breakfast, you will have some of our students waiting table for you. They just did their first practice round with sixth graders waiting on kindergartners, and it was the as-lit-chew thing you've ever seen. When they're asking, do you want pepperoni pizza or cheese pizza? That's great. So please consider coming if you have some time. And we're also doing an evening event of just kind of sugar on snow, except it's on ice cream, because who knows what kind of snow we're gonna have.
Can you say the date and times of those?
Sure, that is Thursday, March twenty first, twelve o'clock. Noon is our pancake breakfast, and then. By the very will be kind of the sugar on snow. The displays will still be out. The kids can talk about it.
Look if anyone has an ice grinder.
We have one, we have, we have, but you know, you just stop and think about how long it's going to take.
Oh, so it's a hand grinder?
Yeah. Yeah, we have hand grinder at school.
A bit more secret with that.
Yeah. So I can go through the pictures real quick. So if you look kind of on the photo stock on the right hand side, you got a lot of the Maple Unit stuff going on. So you got, you know, kids are tapping the trees, kids are helping to boil. Kids are helping to cut the wood, they're helping stack the wood, they're helping to stir. I mean, they're they're really in there doing the work, which is amazing. We've got community members coming. We have just some experts. Sharing some amazing stuff with us that they have, including one guy brought hats from as early as the eighteen hundreds. And he's just got them all laid out, and he's like sharing like how the patents worked and how we evolved over time. Kids are just fascinated. They want to create their own wooden hats now, and so it's really exciting. Just just hear the expertise of our community. And then if you keep going to your left, on the very top, we actually had, so at the dance, I just want to celebrate. Every one of our sixth graders showed up to the dance. Every one of ABS's sixth graders were brave enough to go to some other schools. Middle school dances, six, seven, eight graders. I was just really super proud of them. And while they're there, they're so excited to see friends that they have. As well as older students from ABS who really welcome them and help them feel comfortable. So that was awesome. And kudos to Weatherfield for really hosting a very awesome, fun, engaging kind of dance. It was exciting to see so many kids actually on the dance floor instead of running around playing ball. I mean, there's really a lot of kids dancing. Um, we've had quite a bit of success this year with our ice cream because we've had. A community member who has been paid some to come and take care of it, and it's been huge. It's made a wall of difference just to have that regularly cleaned up. But you'll see, you know, kids will get out there and they want to help too. So they'll see Mr. Cronin out there shuffling, and somebody will be like, yeah, let it go, wow. So you'll see how often kids out there just giving an extra hand. And so right below that is two kids going up on the T bar, and then we were visited on our Day of Play, International Day of Play. By the Fox, and that was great. So lots of fun.
Uh, okay. Yeah, awesome. To me here for pre K five for Windsor School. Yeah, I'll come right out of the gates and talk about the our Title One and Curriculum Night, which is three fourteen this coming Thursday. And not to give too much away, but for math people out there in the world, three fourteen is also Pi Day. So I won't say too much more other than we have an amazing math interventionist who may be taking advantage of the date. To have some fun with pi and math. So certainly hope families can come. We sent out a couple of different invites. We're going to send another one out tomorrow to catch folks. It is five fifteen for dinner, from five fifteen to six o'clock, and then six o'clock in the little gym or multipurpose room. Will be our Curriculum Night where we will highlight some amazing things happening in ELA and of course mathematics. During dinner, we will also be highlighting how Windsor School utilizes our Title One funds. And it'll be an opportunity for families to ask questions and weigh in per our Title One guidelines. So looking forward to that. Also wanted to highlight our winter enrichment program success this year. It was super, super awesome. The super quick backstory is that last year we skied, albeit not that much. There was no snow. But when we had students skiing, the rest of the school day sort of went on a quasi normal school day. So we had a team of folks who formed a an activities committee. It's Amber Bennett, Jesse Taft, Patty Palmerlow. And Jillian Moore, and they took this on to create a tip to tail winter enrichment program for our whole elementary school. So we had about ninety skiers at Windsor School, which is pretty great. And then the rest of the building, which is about another ninety or so. We're engaged in rotating winter enrichment activities that involve steam and snowshoeing in Paradise Park and and all sorts of other things. Including, leading me to my next bullet point, putting on a play. So the State Tree Drama Production was last Friday. Hope many of you perhaps were were there. But much to the big ideas theme Jennifer talked about just a moment ago. Highlighting some more ways we're looking to bring families into the building to see what we're up to and to engage and and support the work of Windsor School. Leader in me work continues. Student led morning meetings continue. Actually, I think I edited that, but they certainly do. What I meant to put there was our student lighthouse team is getting off the ground. And the team has been putting together sort of our way of of building in that in hopefully for this spring. So it'll be really exciting to have a K five lighthouse team helping lead our school. So very much looking forward to that. And of course, our team is also getting ready at the end of this month for student led conferences. And those communications will start going out to families. Fast and Furious here to get them in the mix and and help them. See how the shifts that we've made to student led conferences will work for their students. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So for the middle school here, the our leader in me consultant Barbara Linder worked with our team. She's here like every other month checking in with us, either by phone calls with teachers or the team. This visit that she was with us last week, she got to meet with our student lighthouse team. Students brainstormed some more ideas for next year, more ways they could be leaders in the middle school. They shared with her some of the things they've been doing in advisory, like preparing advisory activities, advisory slides. Sharing the morning meeting messages. And another thing that students have done has been our sixth period specials, period summer, about seven or eight. Middle school students have become classroom mentors in the elementary classes. And we will do that again for fourth quarter. Ms. Richter, our middle school counselor, has helped set that up and hoping to keep that going. One of the takeaways from the meeting with Ms. Linder and the students was that there is also, our high school students did it last. Summer where they had like some conferencing with her and planning winter. She talked to them more about it being kind of like a summer camp. And it's a lot of them were interested in participating in that. So hoping to get more details on that for the students. Also, like everyone else, we have our spring student led conferences. Our students are adding to their student portfolios all the time in their advisory class. Our teachers will be sending out dates for the afternoon of March twenty eighth and twenty ninth. The afternoon of March twenty eighth is a half day, and they'll start in the afternoon, so students soon after lunch. And students are dismissed till dinnertime to schedule times for families to join their students here at school to present their work. And we'll also be doing that throughout Friday morning. Our shadow days for Windsor School. Mr. McPhillips and Ms. Richter and Jennifer and I had touched base about a month ago. About finding our days in May for students to come and shadow. We've had some students come from other schools to shadow as well. I think we recently had a Weatherfield student. So we have a plan for at least three days of shadowing before the end of the year. And we also have a couple of students who didn't get to do the Hartford Tech career visit, the eighth graders at the beginning of the year. So we will probably be doing one more before the end of the year for a smaller group. And we do have two students, Mr. Blake Sargent and Macy Birch, who are participating in a student eighth grade. Middle school, I should say, middle school shadowing at Hartford, and I believe it's five weeks where they get to shadow a couple of the programs. For the morning at Hartford, and that started last week. So that was exciting. One other thing, a couple of other things I wanted to share about the mentoring, which is sixth period. And seventh period, the students have clubs. Ms. Lawyer has a group of kind of future teachers doing some work with the first grade class. And one of the teachers in the first grade shared a note with Mr. Lord. It said, hello, my name is Stephanie Murray. I'm the grade one teacher at whenever school. My students are collaborating with a group of students and Destiny Lawyers. Seventh period class each week. One of these students is Nathaniel Pruden. And he came down to my class to do a read aloud during his advisory last week. He's also part of that seventh period club group. We loved it, and we have invited him back for a read aloud every month. So the note goes on to kind of scheduling time for that to happen, and Mr. Lord just won. He also invited Nathaniel to be here tonight, like the rest of our students, to just kind of promote all the books he's been reading and his reading growths in ELA class. So that was exciting as well. And there might have been one more thing I wanted to share. And. Oh, the picture, never again corner is our middle school students who received first semester honors, academic honors. And that isn't everybody, because we had a couple of people absent, and we had a couple of miscalculations, and we received their awards a little bit later. But we had a good number of students who received their academic honors for first semester. And our team is already planning their preparation for second semester honor roll.
What do they have to?
They have to have all three in their classes, meet the standard in every one of their subjects.
Elizabeth, was was your question about the picture?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
You're welcome. Never mind. When you talk about shadowing, is it the students shadowing students, or is it adults shadowing the students?
It'll be the, it's it's usually. So when we have the Weatherfield student, I think he was shadowing a ninth grader, because he's an eighth grader and he might come here next year. One of the sixth graders from Albert Bridge shadow, they will probably spend some of the day with. They'll shadow with the seventh graders for next year. What we just heard. And the good news is that when they're here, lunch is with sixth and seventh graders, so we kind of know what we're supposed to do. So that's good.
Awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, and then I'll share Kate's piece here. Congratulations to Avery Bean, who finished in eleventh place in the individual Vermont bowling tournament. So awesome. Team coach was super proud of him. And we had our girls' basketball finishing second, state championship, played super hard, well representing Windsor. Our school counselor and health position, I'm not sure what that piece was, Christine.
That will come later.
Okay.
In my report.
Okay. And we are working on the schedule for next year for the master schedule. Kate has already been working with some of the teachers on preparing that. And then Sergio and I and Jen will work our way into finding our slots into all those shared spots that we cross over in. Our specials, our afternoon classes, our SU classes that we have our algebra and any other availabilities to our students. So that is underway, the master schedule.
Can I add one thing?
Please.
We, as an administrative team, that last year, we do a day of march, march retreat. We really talked about how we could center the schedule. So we've worked on that this year. We're going to debrief. I mean, we've got some other things to address after living that schedule for this year. But I'm super proud that we're thinking that way and have had some success. So.
And the March intensives and trips is also the last week when we're coming up on our conferences that we schedule. I'm going to read a couple of things that Kate left for some of the opportunities, some of the trips. There's an education series Fahrenheit four fifty one at the Capital Center for the Arts in Concord. Hype Conference, the hype stands for Hosting Young Philosophy Enthusiasts. And the Hype Conference has been put on by the Hegan's Epic Forum since two thousand and ten. This conference brings thousands of students in all of central New England together to spend the day having healthy discourse about philosophical issues. Facing our generation. The essential question for this year's conference is how does self perception affect how we interact with the world around us? And there's some essential questions are how does your environment and upbringing alter the way you perceive yourself? And are perceived by others, school friends, family culture, geographic location? And how do our beliefs influence perception and consider universal truth and relative truth? How do you interact with people with different perspectives? And how does, and how do you? And how does, and how do you perceive yourself? How does the way you perceive yourself coincide with the way others perceive you? So that's all happening at the hype conference. And we also have our high school students going off to, I want to say Burlington, but it might be Monteleo Theater Festival this year. They are, they are working on specific scenes that they're going to be presenting. And Ms. Warner and Stilward, her mentor, are both super excited about this event coming up. Yeah.
Elizabeth, go ahead and head up.
Thanks. I, I think that that's a theater competition, a, a New England-wide theater competition.
I think you're right. I just don't know the status of our, our group, if they're competing or if they're competing.
They're competing.
Yeah, how many, how many students are taking part in that, that hype conference? Sounds fascinating. I don't remember hearing about that.
I don't know if that's happening during, I don't have the date here.
Yesterday, it's Marv that went down.
I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, Elizabeth?
Oops, what happened? Okay, there. Sorry. I'm using a screen I'm not familiar with tonight. I have a couple of questions. Is now a good time to ask them?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay. Where are we with personalized learning plans and how do they coincide with student-led conferences?
So our students are working on their personalized learning plans regularly and adding artifacts of their work during their advisory.
Sometimes we, we call them their leadership portfolio.
Their leadership portfolio, and that's what they will be sharing at their student-led conferences.
So what, okay, but can you explain what a leadership portfolio is versus a, I, I fully understand what a PLP is. Can you explain what the difference between a PLP and a leadership portfolio is?
I would say they're pretty close to the same thing. Their, their leadership portfolio, personalized learning plan is what they're sharing. It has kind of their background, their bio of themselves, who am I, what their passions are. And then when it comes time to share their goals, their goals for their classes and their growth, that's where they'll be sharing artifacts from each class, each subject area. Yeah, so I, I would say that is just something that's going to, they're going to continue to grow on. But that's what they're going to use, that, that portfolio to share at their student-led conference.
That's Kate. Eight, I think the high school PLP work is, I just, I wish Kate was here because I just read an email thread about the PLP work in the high school, which is going to be facilitated by Kim Gogan, who's our flexible pathway coordinator and I think one of the school counselors. So I only know that from an email that came across my desk. But certainly can follow with Kate on the high school realm of PLPs at the next meeting when she's here.
But now I'm, now I'm a little bit confused about, are the high school PLPs different from the leadership?
I don't think so, Elizabeth. I think it's just the template and for PLP. In Leader and Me, they're called Leadership Portfolios, because we're using that language.
I think what I'm understanding is that it's two different ways of presenting the same data. Is that a good way to put it?
Well, I think it used to be called personalized learning plans. It's portfolios before we became a leader in the school and they, they call it leadership portfolio. So it's a bio of who they are and their artifacts of what they're working towards and their growth.
Does that help, Elizabeth?
Sort of. Okay. I, I understood that, I, I guess I misunderstood when that law, what was it, the one, I can't remember what the 71, 71 was passed. I understood a PLP to be basically every kid getting an IEP.
Uh, seven through 12 is required by law of PLP.
But I understood it to be more of an IEP than, not an IEP in the special ed sense, obviously, Katie, don't get worried. But it was like, you know, really exciting because every kid would get that same kind of planning for their own year, not. Yeah, so.
Then the path, yeah, and the path they're going to take. So I mean, if they're going to engage in flexible pathway opportunities, that might be embedded in their personalized learning plan. So the high school might look a little different. I'll have Kate talk about it next month.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. All right, let me move on. So my report from February is attached. You want to get to hear it, so I'm not going to repeat it all. I'm going to try to share some technical information with you. I know the principals have all touched on the, the visit from our Leader and Me coach, that's Barb. She's in the picture there. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend a little bit of the high school session she was having with the Student Lighthouse team at the high school level. And I did check in with her today because I wasn't able to stay the whole time. But while I was there, there's posted on the board, the students were, they were really reflecting on successes and struggles. But where in the school they're seeing successes and where there are places we can grow. They share their voices, their passions, their ideas. They had great questions. Their big bra or their area of focus, which is what we want from them, where do you think we really need to spend our time and energy? Came down to getting students and teachers to have more trusting relationships. That was the big idea that they thought we needed to work on the most. And so they are going to have a follow-up meeting with Barb in April. So Barb was here, I think, four days. She met with student teams, staff, lighthouse teams, leadership teams, and the whole SU across the SU. Yeah, she did our report out, because Jennifer didn't talk about it, but Barb was raving about ABS and their Student Lighthouse team. She said it's a mixed group of fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, sounds like you're adding some younger students in. She, she said that the students want to work on more outside project-based learning. The students are meeting with staff to discuss how to proceed. They are empowered and excited about what is happening. And they're going to be engaged in student-led conferences this month as well, if that brings true. Jen, Barb wanted to highlight that, she was pretty excited about the work being done. I'm updating anticipated openings, this was a question that came up. And just to be, it, it doesn't look too terrible, actually, from the past, from in the past, what we've had to, had to hire, of course, contracts haven't gone out yet and we may have some surprises. But in Windsor, we know we have two elementary teachers that are, that are on one-year contracts. They were hired late, late in the season. Middle school, we've got the middle school writing teacher and the interventionist, which is title bonded. In the high school, we have a health teacher that we've been trying to fill for, for, for now. We know we have retirement, which is Andy Tough, so high school social studies. We will have a resignation and I'll add to that after we talk about the resignations. ABS, Jennifer, you correct me if I'm wrong, point five PE teacher, point four music teacher, point five place-based, I always said project-based, which is right currently a, a one point of math, which is PE. And then point four perm is up that she has in her building. And in special education, CK's listed on speech mytho, I think, two speech-language mythologists, four staff across grade levels, A's classroom professional staff, E, C, S, E, special educator, and that's really, early childhood. Early childhood, special education, so, and a high school special educator. So those are the openings. We'll keep you updated. We're, we're not, we're hesitating to post until after the budget passes, some anticipated, but we'll keep you updated. I just wanted to share some budget updates. Maybe probably maybe some of you have seen these, but last Tuesday, 95 districts had their budget votes, 65 passed and 30 failed, that's our third, which is unprecedented in the state. Eight districts rescinded, three of them were ours out of the eight. And there were 14 districts that vote later on the March 5th. So all three of our districts, just so you know, and we can promote it for everybody, will be voting on April 2nd. Warnings are up, sample ballots are up. That's a thing we had one more to go today. And just, I want to just announce publicly, our, our budget informational meeting is March 27th at 6:00 PM, November 210. Dinner will be served at 5:30 in the dining hall and Lori did send out a sign up for that if you're, if you're coming for the meeting. So we know how much, how many people are coming for dinner. And currently, the administrators are working on that public presentation of the budget for the, for the March 27th.
Elizabeth?
Thanks. I just would like you to confirm out loud on the record that, that meeting will be hybrid.
That meeting will be hybrid. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that sounds warm. Any questions about the budget?
And that we are, we have a discussion item too, so if we do.
We do. We can talk about it all, yeah. Okay.
If we do.
Yep, and then I, and I know we have to take action on this, but I wanted to highlight in my report that our principal search process has concluded. It ran very smoothly under Brittany Preston outlined the process and led it. And I am bringing for your approval tonight the name of the principal that we have to hire. Her name is Tracy Thompson. She comes with five years of principal experience. She is currently the principal at the Newton School in Stratford, Vermont, where she has been a successful principal for the last five years. She spent 21 years teaching elementary school, so she has elementary experience, which is wonderful. And she has some middle school science teaching experience as well. She, I can't begin to share how outstanding her references were. They were, uh, one from the school board chair that said that I was going to have to find her or Tracy, she was like, why not keep her? And just, you know, she's, she's been a real strength in that community for the last five years and they're, they're going to be sent here though. But she's really looking for a collaborative model. She wants to work with other principals and we have that model here, which is really successful, I have to say. And she would love, if, if she is approved tonight, to come to the April meeting and introduce herself to all of you. So, and I feel super, just to say, I mean, I feel so fortunate that we have such, we have a strong candidate pool. And it was, you know, a hard decision in the end with the two finalists, but Tracy was the choice of, of the teams. And we're thrilled that she's coming and think that she'll just add, add experience and collaboration and, and good humor. She definitely has a good sense of humor, which you need to have in this, in this role. So we're, we're hoping that you will approve her tonight. Yeah. And, and just to say, Sergio is online and he is very committed to having some days with her, overlapping days to bring her to speed. And she will join us for our March retreat, our administrative March retreat at the end of the month, so. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Christine.
Yeah.
Any, any questions before we move on to items for discussion? All right. So items for discussion, follow-up questions if need be. FY25 budget, so Christine, you put up on the board there. We are going to be pulling that on Tuesday, April 2nd, and that is going to be the usual. Did we get the polling hours for that? Was it like 9 to 7?
Uh, let me pull up the warning, I can tell you.
Yes.
Ours is usually 10 to 7.
Yeah, I think it's later. I did meet with Amy Yates at West Windsor and she is amazing. She's going to do all the election pieces.
Excellent.
So we don't have to worry about that. Larry has ordered the ballot, the company that we ordered the ballots from.
Amy Yates is the town clerk?
Yeah, Amy in West Windsor, the town clerk, yeah. So it's 9 to 7 on the warning.
On the warning. Okay. Elizabeth?
I, I'm pretty sure it has to be the same in both towns. So.
Yep, so it'll be 9 to 7.
Yeah, I'll pull it up. Say that, Jennifer, you have it in front of you.
I have it in front of me.
Excellent. And what's the, what's the name of the West Windsor location again, just for?
It's the Town Hall, but it's officially the Story Memorial, Story Memorial Hall.
Okay, so Story Memorial and Windsor will be at the, at the rec center.
It'll be at the rec center, yeah.
Excellent.
And it is, yeah, Walter, 9, 9 to 7. Yeah.
And we also have, as you mentioned earlier, our informational meeting, dinner 5:30, meeting at 6. I did confirm with Paula.
Okay.
She may not be personally covering it because of that shift of the, the slot working Wednesdays. Uh, but we're going to make sure that there's somebody from Windsor in there who can.
It's 5:15.
5:15?
Yeah.
For dinner?
Is that what Lori put out?
Well, that's what has come out.
Okay, that's fine. 5:15.
Okay.
Transition time, opposite room, 210.
Sure, yeah. Yep, so 5:15, Windsor air coverage, that, and then that is going to be hybrid meeting. It's, Elizabeth, I did confirm, but we'll get a little extra, extra footage from Windsor here, so I can, and something nice to edit together and put out for, hope to see it live. Elizabeth?
Thank you. Christine, I noticed that you sent an email out by blast to, to our parent list. But I was hoping that maybe I could ask you to send it out also to our community members through the listservs and the front porch forums.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Sure. Yeah.
To, to both towns. Thank you.
Do you want, yeah, do you want the whole budget put there or the, just the FAQ I sent out?
I'd like it if you could send out, out to the parents, also to the community members through, through those two, for, for this event, through those two outlets, so that it would be great for them to have a link to the budget, the, the budget. And it also would be great that if they wanted to.
Oops, you muted, Elizabeth.
Sorry.
Sorry.
It would also be great that if they, if they wanted to attend the dinner and they have to RSVP. I sent it out to West Windsor, but I'm not sure it went out because I was.
You muted yourself again?
Sorry. It's on my screen, so I'm not, I'm not used to it, but if they need to RSVP, if you could send it out, that, that would, that would really be great. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Sure. And I'll, I'll put a link to the, I mean, everything's posted on the website now, all the, there's a, what do you call it, a banner?
Yeah, I've seen that and I appreciate that. Yeah, I've seen the digital, digital copy of it and it's not going out until the rec center and there's.
Yes, oh yes, physically printed them.
Fantastic.
Sold them, so.
Awesome.
And will there be opportunity for absentee voting? And how does one register to get? Because I'm looking at my voter page, which is how you register for absentee ballots. And there isn't anything yet.
So I was talking with the town clerk in Heartland today. Because I have a list of absentee ballot requests from Weathersfield and from Heartland because we didn't, remember, we didn't, we called out on printing our ballots and rescinded early, so I don't know if those went out, Amy. The, the Heartland clerk today sent me some, a letter that he received that said that we don't have to send absentee ballots to those lists unless the people request them.
Again, I believe is what I read out, but there has to be a mechanism to request those. And it's usually on my voter page.
It's usually, okay.
They have to go into the election system to show that ballot. And then that comes up on my voter page for voters to be able to request an absentee ballot.
Okay, and it's not there currently?
It's not there.
And how does it normally get there?
See, the clerk has to enter that as an election. So that's the clerk of each.
Jennifer, be Larry, I think. Will it work?
Yeah. I'll ask him. Um, or the, or the town, would it be the town clerk?
Um, whoever has access to my voter page.
Election. Okay. The election database.
Yeah, it might be in collaboration with Larry, working with him.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. That's really important.
Good on them.
Um, and otherwise I know that you, me and Ed and Larry are going to get together prior to that meeting, just to, to make sure of a game plan. I know this is a little bit different presentation from what we have most years. Um, in advance of that, the only thing that I, that comes to mind is that, uh, and this is, I, I assume this is what would happen, but you know, making sure that we have not only the budget that we are presenting and those numbers, I do think that we want to make sure that we show what our previous budget that we rescinded would have looked like. Um, I think that that, that will be impactful to show people what we've already done. Um, I know it's, it's a little bit of a bizarre situation that we're in right now, but you know, looking at how many budgets failed, the decisions that we did make, functionally in a way, we, we sort of preemptively failed our budget.
Yeah.
And I think that that, that might be a mental model that's, that's worth putting out there for folks is to think about this not as a first budget vote or really as a second budget vote. Um, and to, and to base it with kind of that mindset. Um, I think that having that comparison point to show why we made that decision to, to pull it out, because I think those numbers say a lot.
Yeah. So in the layout, I'm sorry, in the layout, do you want them like, do you want like the old wages and the new wages thing, or do you want like the old stuff, the new stuff, or just key parts of the old stuff? Probably, I think you should focus on the cuts that were made. Like this was the budget total, these were the reductions, and this, this is the new total.
And I, I think, um, the minutes where it has all the little things that we took out.
That would be on the slide. Yeah.
Elizabeth?
Thanks. I think it might be also good to include, um, a brief explanation of what happens when a budget gets voted down, that we return to not only last year's budget, but 87%. Um.
Yeah.
Technically. What is it if you don't, if, if a budget is not approved by July?
Yeah. But I think it would be good to have that explanation in there so people have the full picture.
Yeah. Um, explain that 85%.
87% you would revert back to this current year's budget at 87% of that number.
And that is if a budget is not approved by what July?
July 1.
July 1. So there may be an opportunity to not have to do that.
To do another.
Yeah.
But it's quicker. You also have to think about all of the, everything that has to go into one more budget election.
You'd have to do another informational meeting.
Yep.
And another vote.
A new ballot.
And new ballots.
Which needs the, um, it's going to be through a machine, it needs a holding card, that needs to be. And they need to know, or I need to know 85%. What would that new number be?
Yeah. 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 I think that, I think that that is a, as much for, yeah, as much information as we can give our voters about what the potential consequences of what really is the second budget failing would be. Um, I mean, I think it's worth pointing out too, that one of the, one of the advantages that we got by rescinding on our own is that the state is reimbursing us the cost of running this election.
Yep.
Um, districts that chose to run with their budgets don't have that luxury now. I, I don't believe they do.
I don't think so.
So that was, I mean, that was part of the calculus, at least in my decision making of doing that rescinding, if we had some funding that we could, we wouldn't be putting ourselves at, at more financial risk. Um, not that as, you know, compares the services we provide, but you know, money's money.
Yeah. I was very surprised that so few did, you said.
You know, I think, what I'll say is that, um, I think that I had an immediate reaction to that. But hearing, talking to folks in a couple of other districts, you know, that i- if you looked at the the wave or like the diagram that shows how many districts lost students and how many gained students under this new transition mechanism. Um, there were a lot of districts that were in our position where we were losing students and it was having a, a pretty big negative impact on our, on our tax rate. There were plenty of other districts that were on the other end of that curve. Um, we also came right up to the line as far as being able to, we didn't send out mail-in ballots. We, we actually didn't print our ballots until after we had rescinded and we, we played a pretty intense game of chicken with that. My understanding is a lot of districts didn't have that luxury. They had already, by this time that news came down the pipe, they had already gone on that. Um, and I do think, you know, had we been in the same position, we might've made a different decision.
Well, Weathersfield and Heartland had already printed and sent and they both rescinded.
Yes.
I think was the right thing to do.
Sure.
Um, but I, just to make sure, I mean, we, we gained students in the new formula.
Oh, we did.
We did.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah. I, well, it's, it's funny because it would make you think that there would be some benefit of that, right? But we didn't really see that in our.
Oh, yeah. And I, I appreciate the correction. Yeah, we gained students, but we still got hit harder by the chain. We were on that lower.
On the lower.
Of that, of that diagram. But again, that is obvious. We did gain some students.
Yeah.
So I mean, it, I think it goes to show, and one thing that in the, in the coverage of this is the talk about how, how non-linier the way that we calculate our education tax in the state is, I think that's case in point, right? Is that, that doesn't.
Yeah.
You know, to the layperson, that does not make a lot of sense.
And I, I think that the, you know, the intent of the law is, is to create more equity and, and what I'm hearing from other districts is actually, uh, creating a worse situation because there are districts that that did gain student in the waiting system, but their budgets have failed and they're going to have to go back to the drawing board and see what happens.
Yeah. I, you know, I think.
Unintended.
Oh, of course. Yeah. And I, I feel like I learned something new about this every time. I, I've been trying to catch every, every Vermont public presentation and still trying to catch what's happening with legislature, even though we've kind of gotten past that bill. And I think one, one thing that I've internalized a bit is that I think that, and, and again, this is my, my opinion based on what I've heard. I think that Act 127 being implemented in this environment specifically is what is causing that. That's my understanding from what I've heard. Um.
Well, there's a couple, a couple of different factors that play into this and, um, what isn't kind of added into this transition was that the loss of SRA. And then of course, the common level of appraisal plays just such a huge role in deciding what the actual tax rate is going to be. The, the changes in the, the student count almost seems insignificant.
Yeah.
In the end.
Yeah. And that's, that's, I think that it's, what I have been gathering is that I think that 127 has maybe been getting a little bit more, more press or pausing this issue where it's really just kind of part of the shaky mechanism that, you know, CLA is out of web. SRA funds and, and I mean, the other thing is that the, the yield, what is it, revenue meals tax again, like that. Flooding tank that. So I mean, it, it's, it's another one of the situations where perfect storm, I think is a perfect way to describe it. Um, at any rate, we, we don't have anything to vote on. I just think that while we're dealing with this pretty monumental issue, it's, you know, it's worth giving a little bit of time to just discuss it. Uh, and, you know, the more people can hear this and engage with it, if this brings up any questions for folks in the community and they want to send with it, I mean, it's, uh, as I said earlier, so who's here talking to you, I may not answer in person. If you have questions, you can email me or any one of us. Uh, and I'm happy to engage folks on it, except I think it's really important, uh, through something so complex that we really have to work together as a school community to, to try to process all of this. Um, and fortunately we have the better part of another month to do that and we'll have an informational meeting. Um, yeah. Any other FY25 thoughts before we move on?
There was two other things that I think are important to point out in that a frustration among districts is how little control they have over the SU budget. Uh, the important thing to remember, that shift of money towards the SU budget was not something that local districts did, or even test tubes did. That was the state's open to find significant savings by shifting special ed to the SU. As usual, significant savings never showed up. The same thing, of course, occurred when the state removed, um, healthcare away from the local, uh, districts, uh, to the same level expecting to read significant savings, which never occurred. And so a lot of the budget issues that local districts are having are really based upon larger systemic issues with, that need to be tackled by the state department or.
Yeah. Yeah, the healthcare cost, that's another big, uh, big pressure that.
Yeah.
Again, another thing that is tied to 127, also not something that we have even a little control over at the, uh, this local governance. So, you know, the more we can talk to voters about this, the better. Um, leading up to our April second vote, which I hope that every registered voter in town shows up for. Alright, any other, any other discussion on FY25 budget? We will, we will have more opportunities anyway. Alright, so now let's move on to, um, our new hire. Tracy Thompson, we already heard about, um, from Christine in the administrative report. So I will take a motion to approve the hiring of Tracy Thompson to be the new Windsor Grade K35 principal.
So.
Second.
Alright. Any discussion?
I, I reiterated this before, and I will reiterate it again upon this vote, the fact that, uh, how important it is moving forward to make sure that this school district is not under-administrated as I believe it has been, uh, in the past for many, many, many years. Um, and I also believe that in that under-administrative role has created a level of mistrust between staff and, uh, and administration that I am happy to say that I feel has been on the repair in the last few years. So I think keeping with this structure uh, in, in hiring this, uh, permitted principal of will keep us on the same path and it will take many, many years to, um, not as many as I fear, to fully repair, uh, and create a, a wonderful, uh, culture within our schools. So I support this.
Elizabeth?
Thanks, Davis. I, I, I'm going to be a wet blanket here and I'm sorry. Um, I think it's great that Tracy Thompson, uh, that everybody likes Tracy Thompson and that she's ready to be hired, but I don't want to vote in favor of hiring her until I've met her. This is a principal job. Um, we've only seen, uh, like four or five bullet, I think three or four bullet points of who she is. And, uh, I'm, I'm not comfortable voting in favor of that at this time.
Any other thoughts?
I will push back on that.
I know, I was, you know, first.
Uh, all too often I see, uh, I have seen in the world of education, when when delaying a hire for something that is needed, um, and then losing that candidate because of a delay, that is only my concern for waiting. Um, I don't know if something can be arranged for next meeting to, 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 to move over this hub. Um, I, I agree with you, Elizabeth, that not seeing a candidate makes it difficult to, to vote for them.
I, I'm, I'm kind of, to be perfectly honest, I'm, I'm a little puzzled as to why she didn't just come for five minutes during this meeting. Five minutes is all it would have taken.
Oh, she would have come, Elizabeth. That's probably on me. I, I I wrestled with, um, bringing a candidate to meet the board and then not being hired, which, which just seemed like awkward to me. So I, that's on me, not her. She would have come tonight. I just said, what, would you come to meet the board after they approved your hire? So I'll take, I'll take ownership on that and I think that was the wrong move. My apologies, but, um, she, I can speak to the committee, really, so many, many, yeah, many stakeholders really support her. And I'll certainly learn from this experience if, if it should be done a different way. But that was, I said to her, I said, the board will, well, I'll bring up her nomination on, at the March meeting and then I think you should come and meet the board in April. So I'll, I'll take that.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, like, everything you talked about with the process and the committees and all the stakeholders that were involved, like, makes me feel like we put our trust in them and we asked them to do this and to, um, come back and everything you're saying. So to me, I think we would do a disservice to not vote, is my opinion, because we have had these people that we've trusted to do this.
Uh, so Elizabeth's here first and then Bill and Nancy.
Christine, I'd like you to think about the process that was undertaken when you were hired for Heartland. I mean, that was a process that involved community, being like interviewing with the community, into, at least meeting the board. Like, this is, this is a very surface level. I, I'd this, I, I appreciate that there's a committee of stakeholders. Um, I do, but I also appreciate a thorough process and I also appreciate that it's time, time sensitive, but, uh, I, I can, I, I am even less comfortable than when I first spoke up, thinking about what hap, what the process was when you were hired, Christine, or when Jennifer Aldrich was hired. Um, I, I, uh,
And I, I certainly can respect that, Elizabeth, and I, you know, uh, in hindsight, we, I had Brittany come and discuss the process and what it would look like. Um, and if it should have included the board, then I, I would hope that somebody would state it at that point. And it, and it didn't. I think there were opportunities for the board to be part of it, um, within the community or maybe that was the only place. I don't know. I can't remember at all, but, um.
So were, were there any, I mean, were there, was there a board member on the hiring committee?
I don't believe there was.
Was there a community member on the hiring?
Yes. And, and students met with the candidates. Uh, leadership teams met with the candidates, teachers met, the staff met with the candidates.
Family member.
Family.
Yeah, they could too. I unfortunately wasn't able to make it that night, but there was an opportunity that went out.
Um, I think Bill and then Nancy, you might need to comment on this.
Um, I think I, I do agree with you, Elizabeth, that it would have been nice to meet with her. At the same time, the process was presented and I think it's really important for leaders, if they're going to delegate, then to trust who they delegated to. And so when you create a committee, then, uh, to do something that, that committee has done it, uh, unless you intervened in some way, then you have to trust the people that you've chosen. I, I think that's kind of was Max's point.
Well, I mean, I, I, it's not that I don't trust, let me be clear. It's not that I don't trust the people who were chosen. Well, I mean, I I it's not that I don't trust. Let me be clear. It's not that I don't trust the people who were chosen to select the person. Of course, that's the selection panel. But. To 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 then be given two or three sentences. And then be asked to vote on it, I think is really. Really presumptive. And uh, I mean, with Sergio, I I think it was a similar thing, but I Sergio came with. Recommendations from people who I know who had worked with Sergio in the past. And and we met him before we we voted on his hiring. Yes, we did.
Game to a board meeting. I actually, Sergio and I chatted about it, like, did you come the night you were. Recommended or the the month after? And we just kind of talked about it. And again, it's it's on me. It's not on the candidate. She does come with high recommendations from. People that actually work in this S U currently have worked with her in the past as well. So I totally understand, Elizabeth. I apologize if that was a step that was missed. I think it would. If I put myself in the shoes of the candidate and the board did not approve my nomination, it would. It wouldn't make any questions, you know.
Nancy, do you have a comment?
I will. I just wanted to say that Megan speaks for me, and I don't remember meeting Sergio before. Um, we voted and and Bill was just talking about. The school working to earn trust in administrators, and I trust our administrators.
Any other comment before we move to a vote?
Again, it's not a question of whether trusting administrators.
I understand that, Elizabeth.
It's a. It's a question of being included in the process. That's all.
I guess I guess I'd have to. Just sort of point out is. I wasn't included in the process. At the same time. I wasn't excluded from the process. Okay? So. Again. You have a good point, Elizabeth. It's probably something that we should discuss on hiring procedures. In the future. At the same time, at this point, I am unwilling to lose a candidate that comes. Highly recommended, especially. What I know about the school he's coming from, not a particularly easy school to be a principal with. Uh, so. I don't want to lose a candidate because we wait a month. To approve. That's probably what's going to happen because there. When we were dealing with the hire with Christine. As the S U, we couldn't wait. Because we were a loser. And it's like any other administrative position. There are no administrators out there. It is that simple. And if we're not this lucky to. Find someone with experience and someone with experience that comes highly recommended. I feel comfortable moving forward tonight.
Is there another comments? I'll I'll say, I think this has been a good discussion about our hiring process. And I guess I'll, to some extent, echo Bill, you know, Elizabeth, I I completely understand where you're coming from. I think that is. Advantageous and. Really. I would say something like best practice to have some more contact with candidates prior to arriving at this point. I also, I mean, I'll be honest, I've been aware of this process happening. I knew that there was a hiring process going on. And even as I say that, I did not personally reach out and request to be part of this. I was aware that there was a community meeting where I could have gone and. Met Tracy Thompson. I I will be honest, I I have worked. In the same school, I believe it was Tracy Thompson about a decade ago, so I have some familiarity with her personally. But I was aware of opportunities that I had to seek out, and I I did not take those. I think this is something that we should, there at the end of the meeting, there are a couple of things I think we should look at this year. I think that this does go under hiring practice. Um, but I I will, you know, be honest, I do support um, moving forward of this today. I think that. Again, with my experience being a part of a hiring process for, you know, for Christine and just knowing knowing some of the pressures that we have. Trying to get administrators in here at this point, these are all good observations, but I feel like it's always a bit. A bit kind of late to. To shift gears on that. All right. So I will take a roll call vote. Um, I will start with Megan.
Did we make a motion?
Yeah, there was a motion. That was the discussion, and we are we are voting whether to. Approve the hire of Tracy Thompson as our new K five principal.
Aye.
Aye. Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
I will say aye, but I will request uh, consistent procedures in the future.
I think we all agree with you, Elizabeth.
And I am aye as well. And all right, so unanimously, we have approved Tracy Thompson as our new principal, and and I I agree with you, Nancy and Elizabeth, that I. I feel as though there's general agreement on the board that this is. One of those things where, you know. We did a little bit early, but I think the debriefing on this a little bit, looking back at this process, doing a bit of a plus tell for our next meeting and figuring out what we need to add to this process. Putting in our enduring materials and really starting to just continuing building up that body of knowledge that that strengthens the institution that we're we're going here.
And there was certainly no intent to leave the board out. I mean, when Brittany came and outlined the process. My assumption was that the board wanted to be more part of it, it would have come in that discussion. So.
It it may be something when we look at hiring practice to make it standard operating. Procedure that someone from the board is on the committee.
Usually happens.
That usually happens, yeah, in the past, yeah.
My, I I think that I got uh, confused between a selection process and a hiring process. And uh, so.
Got it. I I can understand that. So let's let's. Make sure we get it right, and hopefully we won't have to hire another one for a while. We'll have it. We'll have the procedure locked down soon.
You know, the the best time to work on that kind of procedure, though, is, you know, we we did this with appointment last year. I have some. Some stuff for this year that I think because it is not imminent, is a really good opportunity to kind of put all those cards on the table, figure out. What those processes, what those procedures are and like how we do it. So if it does come up, we're not we're not scrambling and having these kind of last minute questions arise. So. I'm glad that came up. I think that we're going to do, get something good out of it. It's a good learning experience.
She will come next month and meet all of you. She's very excited to do that.
All right. So, hey, the next item on our list is hiring practices. So there we go. Goodness for a better segue there.
Is it on this agenda?
Uh, it is, yeah. M C, it's on the next page.
Oh, gee, did not. I didn't even turn it over. So I can report what I reported at the S U board meeting.
Okay.
So we have started a committee of of um. A group of people have started a meeting on hiring practices. Currently, it includes myself, Tracy Price, our coordinator of diversity, equity, inclusion, Gina Canfield. Our H R director and Larry Dower. Director of Fundations and Operations and Brittany Preston, Fundations Center.
You did it.
Okay. So we have met. Three times, and we're just right right now gathering information. And trying to set up systems and procedures. So we started with. Support staff because we felt like that was the most um, in need of a process. So we started to outline that, what that looks like. Who's involved, um, requirements for hiring. And that's the state, that's the stage that we're at. We meet um, tomorrow is our next is our next meeting. That's where we're at. We haven't gotten too far, but we're in the process.
Elizabeth?
Does your uh, is one of your goals, um, that rather, does your. Does your goal reach beyond hiring into onboarding as well?
Yes. Yep, it does.
Are you doing the same time, or are you looking at everything at the same time or piece by piece?
Well, we we really looked at, we spent a lot of time last year looking at onboarding and putting some systems in place for onboarding new teachers. So we're wrapping that in as part of the process. And reviewing what we what we came up with. And refining it if it needs refining, if that makes sense.
Well, I'm not, I'm I'm also asking about um. Everybody besides teachers as well.
Yes, yes, we're talking about that. In fact, we have um. We have a group of support staff members who. Have attended a support staff mentor training. Program that they're that's trying to be. Put in place across the state. We have three support staff members attend. They are going to be working on. Um, what that looks like, what mentoring looks like for support staff. We we do not have, we do not currently have a mentoring system for those individuals, and they. When we do um. You know, surveys for feedback, that is something that they bring up frequently. It would be great if we had mentors for support staff. So that is included.
It is that. The, I'm, one of the things that has been now for ten years um, on my mind about support staff is that they don't receive the same training. Uh, that staff does. Has that? Is that? Part of the discussion at all?
Um, we we have worked on that, and so and we have made some progress. I will say that. In the last contract negotiations for support staff. There were additional days added so that um, support staff could attend some of the. Most of the trainings that the teachers are are at as well. And and there are some trainings that support staff need that are different from. The teachers. So it's it's figuring out where and how to do that work, which is not an easy task, I will say. With the time that we have with with staff. So we are looking at that. I think um. We're talking, we're requesting, and staff are requesting as well. Some of ours, we do survey our new teachers after onboarding to see what worked and what didn't. And they are requesting more time for onboarding. We have, we have essentially one new teacher deck. In the contract, that's it. And it's not enough time to do all the things that we need to do um, with our new teachers.
And unfortunately, the. The budget that run it now is kind of shrunk things, but I'm kind of hoping to add some some more time. Our next support staff negotiation as well.
All right.
Yeah.
I don't believe there is any action we need to take on that tonight.
No, I'll just, I'll just keep you updated and share, you know, regularly what we've come up with.
Excellent. Appreciate it, Christine. Any other questions, discussion on hiring practices? Right, hearing none, and I think that we're into things that got added. You you already talked about anticipated openings earlier.
Yep.
Um, so now we are on two, I believe there were resignations that need to be addressed.
There is one resignation. Um. It went to Kate. She was going to bring it to you tonight, so I don't have the actual document, but I do know the person. And it is our uh. One of our high school counselors, just Vivian. Well, and she's. She's resigning now, but she's staying through the rest of the year. We're taking a different job next year. That's correct, that's correct. So um, that's helpful for us to know for posting, so we appreciate that and not having to wait until. After contracts, two weeks after contracts are issued to find out. So I don't know if it's a formal. Uh, approval of the board.
It doesn't require.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention for the move of posting. That position. How long has she been here? Seven years? I wasn't missing four. I think she's been here longer. I think, a little bit longer. Eighty-five, getting five. Katie's saying five, yeah.
She put it in an, she put it in an email today that she was here five years.
Thank you. Thanks, Katie.
Well, I mean, I.
Just to let you know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Appreciate letting us know, and I clearly don't take action on it because it's end of contract, but uh, good to be aware of. Uh, and then the other thing, I know this didn't get added technically during the adding against the agenda, but we'll. Do it this time. Elizabeth, you brought up adopting Robert's rules for small boards. As something we need to do. I. Assume that that is a good idea because I think that that is what we have been doing tonight. So we should probably just codify that. Do you have, do you have anything else to say to that since you uh, you brought it up?
I don't. I I don't think it's necessary. I mean, we have a six person board. It's not necessary for us to have uh, the the formal, I mean, the formality of Robert's rules is so. In case you have a big board and you need to have a level of. You know, tamp down. But we have a six person board, and we don't, we don't need that.
Yeah, I'm with you. I don't think, in reading, you know, you handed out that Robert's Rules book, and I've. Skinned over it a handful of times now. It. We don't really require that kind of collaboration with the six person board, and I'm inclined to agree. And again, we we have functionally been doing Robert's rules for small. Boards tonight and at every meeting I have ever been to on the sword. And the S word, I think.
Yeah.
So I will take a motion to adopt Robert's rules for small boards at Mount Spiny. School district. Or some of.
Oh, same.
All right. Any discussion?
Is that, Elizabeth, you probably know, is that an annual, we should add that to the list. Of the causal order of the future. Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. Uh, I will. Yeah, let's do a voice vote for that one. We haven't done any voice votes. I think this is voice votable. I will take a voice vote. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Is that an aye, Elizabeth? Be honest, it wasn't. Uh, and that was unanimous, so it's no nays, no abstentions, and that's proved of.
And we'll stop recording.